Gentlemen, thank you for being here. This is the public hearing agenda, public hearing for the proposed property millage rate adjustment of August ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. We're called meeting order. To start the meeting tonight, we're gonna have city manager, Assistant City Manager Chris White and city CFO Ashley Casey. Thank you, Ashley. And are gonna give us a presentation of the current state of the city, a national presentation, so that you have some background for any comments you might make. After that, as we've mentioned before, we have a sign up sheet, and there's another one going in the hall, and we'll work through that sign up sheet. Everyone would give in three minutes to be able to make your comments, and we appreciate if you would step, come to the microphone, state your name and address, and then take your three minutes, and we will work through this list over the course of the evening. So first of all, we're gonna have Mr. White with your stand up and presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Flowers. We're glad to see you all out tonight. This is a really important meeting. It's good to see the love and participation with the community on such an important matter. We did wanna kinda go through our process and our schedule that we have outlined before you. This is the first of three hearings we have tonight. This hearing was advertised last week on the second of August. Here we are tonight, six P M at today's workshop. We'll be holding another one on August the twenty-third. After that, the city council workshop as well at six P M. And then additionally, we'll be having the first reading of this ordinance on Monday, August the twenty-eighth. Then Saturday, September the second, will be our notice and report. That will be advertised in the public newspaper. So there'll actually be a report of property tax and five year history. And then we'll have our third hearing on Wednesday, September the sixth, at six P M, again, following the city council workshop. And then finally, a second reading of that ordinance by the city council on Monday, September the eleventh. And if this goes through two readings, it will be effective in the October building to go out to our citizens with a due date, I believe, in December. So a little bit of background information, for those that are not accustomed to some of these terminologies, the millage rate or property tax is generally used by most local governments to support a city, a city general fund. In Thomasville, the millage rate was levied until nineteen ninety-eight. At that time, a decision was made to start chipping away at that and getting that millage rate to zero. The last tax levied by the city of Thomasville was in two thousand and twelve. It was a small millage rate, I believe around three millers, and it was primarily for fire tax. The city is levying, is to levy in front of the school tax, so the taxes that we had been collecting up until now have been for the schools, the Thomasville City School System, and transferred over to them. We do not obtain any of those funds collected. So since two thousand and twelve, the city of Thomasville has relied on utility funds exclusively to support our general fund. This is primarily than our electric fund, because it is really the only one that has a net income, make those transfers. And so we have not experienced an electric rate increase since two thousand and thirteen. That's a decade. Now, we did have a small P C A adjustment in two thousand and seventeen for about three months, but that was, that was not actually a rate increase, for those that remember that. So I think everyone will agree that, you know, the cost of living and cost of goods and services are certainly not the same as they were in two thousand and thirteen, just forward to two thousand and twenty-three. And with that, I'm gonna hand this over to our CFO, this Ashley Casey.
So good evening, everyone. Please let me know at any time if you cannot hear me. I'll try to speak up a little louder. So tonight, our financial reports will include an update on our goal for long-term financial planning, and I'll also present some information to give you a very high level overview of our current financial position. So starting with the long-term planning, for some years now, we have been working to establish a very long-term financial plan for the city. Each year, the council retreat, we go over this plan, and I give them updates as how we can establish a plan. We identified several different things that we know need to be done in order to establish a true financial plan. And so over the years, we've been working through that, and I'll just go through those with you now. So first, we decided to hire a financial advisor, which we did that back in two thousand and twenty-one. This financial advisor was important because we did want someone from outside to come in and assess the city, to confirm where we stand financially. They also were beneficial to help us establish different policies that we needed to put in place. And so we adopted a financial and investment policy with the support and help of the financial advisors. Now, this is also important because these policies lay the groundwork and the foundation for a lot of the policies and the procedures and the decisions that we make financially. And that was only the first step. In these policies, they help develop reserves, debt limits, different schedules for our budget. And so one of the things that we're working on, are still in progress to do, is to establish a general fund reserve. Our goal is to have twenty-five percent of our general fund revenues as reserves. So we are still in progress on that. We also wanted to develop a citywide fee schedule for council to approve. Last year, we worked through each year, every council meeting, almost every council meeting, getting city fees before the council so that they can approve them. This is just for transparency and also for us to better manage our revenue sources. We also established assessments throughout the organization to identify our needs and forecast upcoming expenses. So some of those assessments include like the park assessments or stormwater assessments. We can't manage our costs and forecast our expenses until we know what it is that we need. So in addition to trying to manage the revenue sources, we're also trying to manage the needs. This item here is ongoing. We provide an updated list of capital and S P L O S projects to our council for them to prioritize. We'll do this each year. We present this to council at the annual retreat. This does have a list of the priorities and goals, and we'll use their direction to help build our budget each year. And the last item is still in progress, but we'll use these chosen projects, the direction that our council give us, to develop financing strategies to pay for those projects and those initiatives that the community wants. So this is very important because we've been actively trying to establish this plan. It's very similar to a personal financial plan. When you want to decide when you retire, what age you wanna be, you have to set goals, you have to set parameters, you have to decide how much you're gonna save to do that. You wanna send your kid off to college, you have to know how much to save, what you need to set aside, how much money it will take. That's exactly what we're doing, just trying to take a more proactive approach about it, really have the council focus on the directions and the initiatives we want for citizens to level of service. We're really focusing on that and trying to align our financial capacity and our financial finances to cover those costs. So we've been really working proactively at that, and this is all part of that plan. So speaking of long-term finances, we do need to understand the different services and the state funds that we offer. So starting with the governmental funds, as you know, all governments have governmental services that they provide. So I do wanna start with the general fund. That is very important, very key. You'll hear me mention that throughout this presentation. But the general fund is the one fund that provides the key core services. Every local government has one, and every local government only has one. You're only allowed to have one general fund, and it does provide a lot of the core services like public safety, planning and zoning, highways and streets, economic development. So you'll hear me reference general fund, and those are the services that I speak of. Other governmental funds includes parks and recreation, ARPA, S P L O S, CHIP, and C D B G. Most of these funds are derived from special revenue taxes or special revenue funds, whether it's federal or state funding, or some special tax, but you do have to use these funds specifically to that service, okay? But they're all governmental services. All governmental funds require some type of tax or state or federal funding to support it. So when we talk about governmental funds and I break down the net income or revenues about governmental funds, these are the funds and services that I speak of. Again, they're driven by taxes, whether it's local option sales tax, S P L O S, property taxes, occupational tax, that's what covers these, these services. And in the city, we also provide enterprise funds. And so we have our utilities, electric, water, gas, sewer. We also have solid waste. We're unique because we also offer broadband services. We have our airport, golf course, special facilities, and landfill. Now, these all operate like a business. They are designed to charge services, charge the users for the services they use, and then use that to support operations. This is very important to know the difference because, again, I'll tell you about the net income for governmental funds, and then I'll also stress the enterprise funds. I do wanna make a note that some of these enterprise funds, like golf course, special facilities, they don't always necessarily make a profit, and so they do rely on our electric funds to help support them. And then lastly, it's the authority funds. They are separate legally from the city, but they are still under the city umbrella. This is important because some of these authority funds require financial support from the city, and they're also used to help deliver the initiatives for the council. Now with that in mind, we'll discuss the city's current financial position. So again, I'll break it into two different buckets. We'll talk about the governmental funds, and then we'll talk about the enterprise funds. So our governmental funds, as of two thousand and twenty-two, these are numbers from our audited financials. We received total revenues of thirty-three point six million. The thing to notice from this picture here is that majority of the revenue, or the biggest slice of the pie, comes from transfers from our utilities, specifically from electric and broadband, but mostly electric. Fourteen million dollars, that's about forty-two percent of the overall revenues. The other revenues, the second and third, is from lost, is S P L O S. That is from our sales tax revenue. That is economy-driven. The economy goes up, those sales go up. It goes down, our sales and revenue goes down. We do have a small amount for charges for services. Those are small things like maybe planning and development fees. But again, governmental funds do not rely on user fees or user pay type services. So the biggest thing to note here, again, forty-two percent of these revenues are from the city, from ourselves, repairing ourselves to function and to provide those services, the core services. And these are the expenses. You'll see that majority of this is for public safety, but we also have to provide highways and streets. There's housing and economic development, all of the administrative, cultural, recreation, and interest on long-term debt. This totals about twenty-five million. Now, it does not exceed the revenues this year, partially because a lot of our S P L O S funding that we receive, we have not spent those yet, but we are required to do so, and we're required to do so in a specific way. And so until we use it, we'll show a net income until the next year when we spend it. But as you can see, the expense is about twenty-five million compared to the revenues of about thirty-three. And this is a particular year where we actually got a little bit more money than we normally do because of the sale of a Georgia Public Web, our investment, Georgia Public Web. We sold our investment there, received a share of funds. Those funds, about three point two million, we dropped into the governmental fund to help build those reserves. So we're actually seeing a much larger net income than we would normally see. Now, moving on to the enterprise funds, you'll see this chart representing revenues looks a lot different from the governmental side because it is derived from charges for services. So a total of a hundred and three million comes in to help support all those enterprise funds that I mentioned earlier. Again, most of this is for charges for services. And I would say the top revenue sources is electric, water, and sewer and solid waste, and they use these revenues to cover operational costs, capital, reserves, and debt. Now, electric makes up about fifty-seven, fifty-nine percent of that ninety-seven million that are for charges for services. And they do that because their costs make up a lot more than all the others, which you'll see here. The expenses for our enterprise funds. The biggest number, which is the forty-seven million, is electric. But also the transfers to help support other funds, the governmental services, is mostly also from electric. So it's about sixty-seven percent that weighs on electric to help support the governmental services. But the expenses here, about ninety-nine million, not much of a difference between the revenues and expenses. We're taking in just enough to cover our costs, taking in just enough to have built reserves and cover our debt. So that's where we stand, a very high level of the governmental funds and the enterprise funds. Now, another way to determine how well the city's doing is to look at our credit rating, similar to your personal credit score. We have a credit rating, and the S and P is just one of those credit agencies, but they basically have different categories here that determine how well we can meet our commitments and obligations. So the top category is a triple A, and it's the best rating you can get, and it basically means we have extremely strong capacity to meet our obligations. The second says we have a very strong capacity. And the third, the single A, is just strong, and we're very susceptible to any adverse changes in the economy. Now, I polled the council and I polled the staff and asked them, on many occasions, where do you think the city falls? And you'll be surprised, everyone thought triple A, double A, four As, real awesome. Not quite, they were very surprised to find that we were a single A. Reason being, some of the feedback we received from S and P back in two thousand and seventeen, at the time, they thought we had a weak economy, adequate management, very weak budgetary performance, very weak budgetary flexibility. However, we do have very strong liquidity, strong debt, and a strong institutional framework score. Now, last year, S and P called us up for an emergency meeting, wanting to get an update as to where we stand as far as our general fund and our fund balance. So we did meet with them. We did have to provide them with information. It was hours-long meeting. It was pretty crucial. And so we got new feedback. Now, our rating did not change. They kept us at an A, but they changed our outlook from stable to positive because we were able to change some of the feedback. They thought we did have a strong local economy. They thought we had a strong management. They thought we produced policies. We had things in place for planning for the future. Strong budgetary performance, they saw that we were trying to budget where our general fund and our government funds did not have a deficit, when in the past we did. Strong budgetary flexibility, this showed that we're trying to build a fund balance or reserve for our general fund and our governmental funds. And so we showed them how we're trying to do that and how we're trying to establish that. And so this S and P, again, meeting was very important. They felt that we were moving towards the right track. They did emphasize on the general fund and our lack of reserves and our lack of having flexibility on the, I'm sorry, the dependency on the electric fund. They did want us to diversify our revenue streams. So speaking of the general fund, again, this is just that one, that one point on the governmental side is just the core services, the general fund here. And so you'll see, looking at just those revenues, so I'm taking out S P L O S, all those other ARPA funds, this is just general fund, and you'll see total revenues is about twenty-four point four million. And you'll see here that about fifteen point five of that is from the transfers. It's heavily dependent on the enterprise funds. And you'll see that dependency in those transfers have grown over time. Twenty twenty-two, that hike in the transfer was because of that one-time infusion from the sale of G P W where we got those funds, one-time thing. We took that money, because it's related to our telecom fund, we took that money and transferred it to the general fund to help support their reserves. But you'll see over time, the transfers have steadily increased. And here's just a snapshot of the general fund expenditures. You'll see nearly seventy percent goes towards public safety, and we have our highways and streets and housing and economic development. And that's about twenty-one million. So remember, the total revenues were about twenty-four point four, the expenses are about twenty-one. The only reason why we saw a net income of about three million is because we got that one-time lump sum of money this year. If we did not get that, that would not be the case. Luckily, we had those funds, and we put them in the general fund to help build our reserves. Another performance metric or benchmark that we use, we try to look at our unrestricted cash and investments and measure that and say, hey, we should have at least three months of expenditures in cash or investments. So because of that one-time lump sum of money last year, we did boost our unrestricted cash balance to about four million. That doesn't meet our goal of three months' worth of about five million, but we did boost it up just for last year. Prior to that, twenty twenty-one, that balance was a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. And as you can see from the years past, it hasn't been anywhere near a million dollars at all. And again, this is one of the places that our, the S and P credit agency said, we need to build these funds up. And that's just a note to say, that represents the sale of those proceeds through G P W, which is why it's so high for two thousand and twenty-two. Again, we really have been focusing our efforts on trying to build that general fund up. Another performance metric or part of our policy is to have that twenty-five percent of revenues be built up as reserves. You'll see in two thousand and twenty-two, we did not accomplish that goal, but we're working towards it with that one-time infusion of money. But in prior years, we have not been anywhere near that. Now, in two thousand and eighteen, you will see an adjustment here. We did have to do a restatement of our financials. We did have to clear out a lot of internal debts. Going forward, we're showing a much clearer, more accurate picture, and so it doesn't look too great in the prior years. But again, from two thousand and twenty-two, we are trying to build that up. Now, switching gears, we're gonna focus on the enterprise funds. You'll see here, electric is our largest fund, our largest moneymaker. You can tell how they hover over all of the other funds. One thing to note, the electric shows revenues that blew far, much higher than the red, not much, but high enough. But the difference between the two, we use to transfer to the governmental funds. So it's important that we have that gap there if we wanna continue to transfer to other services. Electric also helps support some of these others. Like you'll see landfill, their expenses exceeded their revenues last year. So where do they get those funds? From electric. So electric being our most, our biggest fund, we wanna make sure we have that secure. And what you'll see, the history of our electric sales are not growing. This is very different from the other slide that showed our transfers to the general fund. They're steadily increasing, but our sales are not. So we're at a point where we need to make some decisions. Last year, our biggest profit fund, profit maker, had a loss of half a million dollars after transferring all these months, the money, and after having operational costs covered and capital. They were showing a loss, and that's concerning. We do need to change the way we have those funds and that set up, and so this property tax will help us do that. And this here is just a slide to show electric's fixed and variable costs. From here, you'll see that fifty-seven million dollars is spent in our electric fund. Majority of this is power costs, it's the supply costs to get the energy to supply to our citizens. And most of that cost is fixed. Whether you use it or not, we still have to pay it. So we can't change that. The transfers is eighteen percent of electric's budget. Regionally, the average for transfers is about nine to ten percent. We're at eighteen. And then there's operations and personnel. With that, there's just a very high level of where we stand as far as general fund and electric. Those are our two key funds that we try to monitor consistently, and that's how they kinda relate to each other. I believe that's important for you to know as far as the financial picture. Now, switching gears, just a little bit, moving on to the property tax. Adlong tax, also known as property tax, is a tax that is imposed on the value of property, real or personal. A digest is an official listing of all property owners, along with the assessed value of that property and the taxes levied. All property in Georgia is valued at fair market value, and the assessment levels are set at forty percent. So if the fair market value of your house is a hundred thousand, the assessed value of your house will be forty thousand. So what you'll be taxed on is the forty thousand, not the hundred thousand value of the house. Now, when deciding to do a property tax, we did have to look holistically at our general fund. And we thought, if we had property taxes and no transfers at all, what would we need to collect as far as a millage to balance the budget, which we are legally required to balance the budget? So we have to have our revenues match our expenses regardless, so we have to find somewhere to get that. So we thought, if we had to raise the millage rate to cover our general fund without any taxes at all or transfers at all, what would that look like? And based on the digest value information that we had a couple of months ago, it was almost eighteen mil, if we did away with transfers altogether. We're not suggesting that, but just so you know where we started from. So we are proposing just the five mils. And so what that looks like for the average taxpayer, if your market value of your house is a hundred and fifty thousand, you have five mils, you're gonna pay three hundred dollars. Again, that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar value house. Taxed with five mils, you're gonna pay three hundred dollars. All right, that's all I have. Bye. Hi.
All good. Good, yes. You got no problem there.
Please do.
So, thank you, Ashley. I thank everybody on three that she does a fantastic job of painting us that narrative of our financial position. And if you don't gain anything else from this hearing, we are currently very, very reliant on our electric fund. So, that's something we really got to address. So, what, um, what happens without a dedicated funding source? It's a reliance on other funding sources since it's our electric fund. I mean, you heard Ashley describe that it's, I mean, it's, last year was losing in the net of loss of a half million dollars. It's a budget to lose more than that this year without a rate increase, a substantial rate increase. It limits our ability to provide services that are part of the general fund. Park maintenance, street paving, recreational programs, public safety. It really restricts our ability to provide for large capital projects. I think everybody realizes we got significant water and wastewater infrastructure improvements that we've begun. You all have rid our streets, we need to do some street resurfacing. We have fairly massive stormwater improvements that we need to do in the range of $5 to $7 million. Then our parks, we have 22 parks, most are passive, but we really need to make some investments in those parks to increase the thinking of that asset in our community. The general fund, as Ashley said, most of that is public safety, which is police and fire protection, which is the largest percentage of that general fund. Highways and streets, paving and road maintenance. That includes public works and maintenance of our parks and public facilities. We've seen all of our right-of-ways, we have 150 miles of streets. Actually, I believe it's 153 miles of streets in Thomasville. We have to manage that right-of-way of the dictated growth, that's all we do with that. Housing and economic development, neighborhood resourcing programs designed to stimulate ecology here locally. And ultimately, our general administration, which is our city council and city leadership and our staff to include our financial office and our administrative team. So, without a dedicated funding source, what does that mean? Increased reliance on utility revenues, which is primarily electric. Lower credit rating, which really lowers our ability to borrow money for capital projects. Limited ability to provide for public safety and other general fund services. A limited ability to complete capital projects. We've recently gone through the exercise of creating a side-up master plan, a street resurfacing master plan, a stormwater master plan, and a parks improvement plan, but we've got to have a funding source, we love this stuff. And that kind of wraps up our presentation. I did want to go back through the proposed timeline. Again, we want to have two more of these public engagement sessions. They are scheduled, but you can see up here for the second hearing on August 23rd. And then that third hearing will be on September 6th. In between that, we'll have, you'll have opportunity at the council meeting, we'll provide that ordinance to city council for that first meeting. And that's all we have on this presentation.
Mayor? Great, thank you, Mr. White. Mr. Stacey, thank you. I think what you can see there is this is a, this is a fairly complex issue. You've probably got 10% of the information. In reality, there's a lot of depth to what goes on. You also can see that this is not taken lightly. There's substantial amount of time and planning that goes into all city budgets and all the various things that we do. When I took on as mayor, that evening, I stated, and I think it's very clear, the most important responsibility, most important role for the city councils is to provide for the financial stability of the city. You can't do any of the other projects that you want to do. You can't provide the services if you don't have a stable financial environment. And that is what we're seeking now.